Okay, so I'm gonna call to order this regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. And is that all I need to say? I should pay more attention to what Jeff does.
We need someone to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, yes. Dennis, why don't you do the Pledge of Allegiance?
I can do that.
Okay.
Stand up, put my hand over my heart, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please, Annette.
Yes. Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Carranza.
Present.
Commissioner Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hughes.
Here.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Here.
Vice Chairperson King.
Here.
And for the record, Chairperson Dan Danikoff is an excused absence for tonight, so we have six present and one absent.
Okay, can I ask for an approval of the agenda, please?
Motion.
Second.
Whoever.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Hey, this is the public comment time. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the Commission on any matter not on this agenda and over which the Commission has jurisdiction. Please limit your speaking time to three minutes, state your name for the record before making your presentation, and the Commission may take action to direct the staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Do we have any public comments? There's three people in the attendees list, but I don't see any raised hands. Raise your hand.
Star nine, but again, this is to comment on anything not on the agenda tonight.
Okay, I don't see any raised hands, so I'm gonna close public comments. So can we approve the consent calendar?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
You're muted, Annette.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Heath?
Yes.
And Vice Chairperson King?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Thank you.
Okay, so we don't have any business moving on to public hearings, and I believe Kelly is going to give us a lovely presentation.
We do need to do expertise.
Oh, you're right, expertise for the upcoming revisions to the ADUs. Commissioner Schmidt?
I don't have expertise, but I have to recuse myself because I have business within the city and clients that are dealing with the two subjects that's being discussed tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt over to an attendee just to have that on the record.
Okay. Commissioner Hughes?
No expertise.
Commissioner Anderson?
No expertise.
Commissioner Heath?
No expertise.
And Commissioner Carranza?
No, plenty of conversations with neighbors on this, but no expertise.
Yeah, no expertise for me either.
I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. I'm sharing my remote connection, so if it looks weird, please let me know and we'll try and fix something up that's different.
Ah, it's good to me.
I see, okay.
Yep, looks good.
Perfect. Okay, so tonight we're discussing accessory dwelling units and urban dwelling units. It's been a topic of conversation for a couple of years, and we're finally have enough legal opinion and have gone through state laws enough to have an idea of where we can go with an ordinance or our municipal code on both of these topics. So as you might be aware, in January 1st, 2021, changes were adopted to ADU laws, and cities at that time were either under the state law or needed to update their ordinances to be consistent with state law. Portions of ordinances that existed that were not consistent were null and void. However, some portions of ordinances that did not specifically conflict with state law are still in effect, so a portion of our ordinance is still in effect, but this is an update to that ordinance to ensure that we're completely compliant with state law. And then on January 1st, 2022, SB 9 went into effect, and SB 9 is a state law that requires cities to allow urban dwelling units and urban lot splits on single-family residential properties in certain areas. We'll get into some of those details in a minute. The city did adopt an interim ordinance for SB 9 before that became effective to deal with some of our unique characteristics and health and safety concerns related to septic and high fire severity zones. In general, the purpose of the state laws is to increase housing. There's a lot of mention of affordable housing and affordable housing types on smaller lots and smaller units, that's infill development projects, and part of the laws also work to streamline housing development projects to make it easier to build housing in cities. So we're gonna talk first about accessory dwelling units. So accessory dwelling units, there's two different types. There's regular accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units can be conversions of existing space. They can be additions to existing houses, or they can be detached from houses. Junior accessory dwelling units are a little bit different. They are just conversions of existing space. So in terms of the ADU code amendments that we're recommending tonight, there's a couple of different pieces. I know you had a lot of attachments to your staff reports, and hopefully we're able to go through all of that. As part of the ADU updates, we're recommending sort of two resolutions. One of those is to Title IX to replace Chapter V, which is specifically related to accessory dwelling units. And then in doing so, we had to kind of make a number of updates to just our regular planning and zoning regulations for consistency with those standards and those definitions. We moved a couple of things from Chapter V over to other portions of our code, and so there's kind of those two codes work hand in hand to make sure that there's clarity and consistency. So we discussed this a couple of minutes ago, but ADUs and junior ADUs, the state now requires that cities allow both ADUs and junior ADUs on a single-family property. So you can have with UDUs two primary dwelling units and then two secondary dwelling units. ADUs and JADUs are allowed in conjunction with sort of any primary unit, so it can be new construction build with a primary unit where you can add it to a property with an existing house. There are some impact fee and connection fee reductions associated with accessory dwelling units. Cities are no longer allowed to charge impact fees for second units that are less than 750 square feet, and they're not allowed to charge capacity charges for those units either. Any unit 750 square feet to 1,200 square feet is required. The cities are required to do a proportional fee charging system for that, which we have been doing since state law went into effect. CCNRs can't prohibit ADUs and junior ADUs, so any CCNRs out there that currently have provisions, those sections are null and void. You cannot use ADUs also as vacation rentals, so the state is really focusing on ADUs and junior ADUs as a means of housing and addressing California's housing crisis, and they don't want to see those used for short-term rentals. And ADUs and JADUs also help us satisfy some of our affordable housing requirements through the city. So the county did a study as part of our sixth cycle Housing Element Updates for our region, and that study determined that about half of ADUs can be counted towards a moderate income price and about half towards the low-income category. So we are able to count ADUs and junior ADUs for our current housing RENA cycle as some affordable housing units, even if they are not deed restricted. So some key points for ADUs, they can be attached or detached, as that first graphic shown, on any property that has a primary unit already established on it. Our current code allows ADUs up to 1,200 square feet on any property. Our new recommendation is to limit the size of ADUs to 1,000 square feet. However, there is an exception for larger ADUs on larger properties if a couple of development standards are met, so some of those are behind the primary unit and as long as the primary house is more than more than double the size of the proposed accessory dwelling unit. So one of our key considerations in our current ordinance are ADUs on septic systems. So obviously, we have a lot of properties in our single-family zone that are served by onsite wastewater currently. The state law does allow us to update our code and include provisions that address health and safety impacts. So our current city code mandates of one net acre of area for any property looking to add a second unit. Basically, there was a study that determined that a half acre per unit is what was needed for septic system. So to do two units, we needed a full acre. We did do an updated analysis as part of this project, and it came up with the same half acre number, but they did clarify that that is a gross acre, so a lot of our properties own to the center line of roads or have access easements over them, and we are able to count that area towards the half acre because that area does not allow for development and provide the correct density for nitrogen loading from septic systems. So we are recommending that the new code section include that clarification, that it is a gross acre needed for a secondary unit. We're not proposing the same restrictions for junior ADUs. Junior ADUs are conversion of existing space similar to a master bedroom addition, and so as long as the septic system can be designed in accordance with our LAMP standards, we are allowing those to move forward regardless of property size. There were also a couple of exceptions that the council had requested that we build in. They came up with a scenario where there might be a three-quarter acre property out on the west side somewhere surrounded by two to five acre lots, and they wanted to make sure that that property in that unique situation would be able to apply for an ADU and do an analysis. So we do have some standards built in to allow us to analyze those properties and provide them a path forward. We also have some exceptions built in for septic systems that include pre-treatment, which would not have that same nitrogen loading concern associated with them. So one of our other main health and safety concerns is related to fire access. So we do have certain areas in the city that do not provide secondary egress for residential units. There's a state code section that has a maximum length of dead-end roads, and houses that were located on roads that are longer than that are required to have a second way out. So we have mapped those areas in the city, and those areas are restricted in having second units regardless of parcel size. They are certain neighborhoods of the city. ADUs are still allowed in areas of high-fire severity zones and moderate fire severity zones per state law because they have determined that building code requirements self-mitigate those situations, but fire access and emergency access is a key component that the city is including in our code. So as I mentioned before, a junior ADU is a conversion of existing space and an existing primary unit. They're similar to a master bedroom addition. They're limited to 500 square feet. They do need their own cooking facilities and efficiency kitchen, but they may or may not have their own restrooms. They can share with the primary unit. We see a lot of these currently as garage conversions, but they can also be conversions of existing habitable space, attic space, underfloor area, space that exists within the existing footprint of a primary unit. And as I mentioned, they're permitted in all areas as long as they can meet septic requirements per our land. And there is a caveat in state code that requires that one of the units on site be owner-occupied when you build a junior ADU. So the owners could live in the junior ADU. If they had another ADU or UDU, they could live in one of those for the principal residence on the property. So a couple of provisions in the state code. They do allow ADUs to be constructed four feet from side and rear property lines as long as the structure is 16 feet in height or less. There are still some building code requirements that need to be met when you go closer than five feet to a property line, but the state is allowing for that reduced setback, so that is written into our proposed code language. The street yard still remains 25 feet, and on a corner lot, it still remains 10 feet from that street corner frontage. We have changed some definitions in the proposed code text to accommodate understanding that a corner street frontage is not a side. It is a corner street and deserves a larger setback for site distance and safety. In terms of CCNRs, again, they cannot prohibit accessory dwelling units. This does not apply to multifamily properties. However, this restriction with CCNRs in the state law is simply related to single-family properties. We do have a lot of planned developments and small lot, single-family subdivisions in our multifamily zones, and so it is thought that those CCNRs would still be able to be enforced if they did prohibit ADUs. So as I mentioned before, the state law prohibits cities now from charging development impact fees to any ADUs less than 750 square feet. It also requires that cities determine a proportional fee for units that are 750 square feet to 1,200, the maximum 1,200 square feet. So the city did do a study when this state law was published, and we basically determined the average size of a single-family house in a Tascadero, and then use that to determine a per-square-foot fee based on our existing development impact fee analysis. And so we have been using and have formally adopted through council those proportional fees based on that methodology. So ADUs, as mentioned, will add to the city's quota for affordable housing. Half of them will be counted as low and half moderate. As an aside, we are working with the county on an updated study, and perhaps more of those, especially the smaller units, will be able to be counted as lower-income units, but right now it's a 50-50 split regardless of size. We did project 225 ADUs to be built over the eight-year RENA planning cycle, so we are relying a lot on ADUs, junior ADUs, and smaller units to help meet our RENA requirements. What the state law also did in 2021 was require cities to allow ADUs and multifamily and mixed-use properties. So existing apartment complexes or condominium developments can include a conversion of non-habitable space to ADUs up to a maximum of 25% of the existing units on site. We're also required to permit at least one detached or new added unit, not with an existing space somewhere on the property for multifamily development, and those requirements are included in the proposed text updates. So a summary of the updates to the remaining portion of the code for consistency. Again, we have that entirely new ADU section. We are repealing and replacing Chapter V of Title IX. We've also included updates to Chapter III, which include land use definitions for consistency, which include common interest development definitions, a mixed-use development definition to clarify that residential units are those on upper floors and mixed-use developments to retain commercial on the ground floor. That setback term clarification to ensure that we still maintain a street yard setback on a corner lot of 10 feet. And we wanted to maintain art studios and detached home offices, which are currently included in our Chapter V for ADUs. We wanted to maintain those as an option for people. We do have people take advantage of that quite often. So we've moved those requirements, basically left them the same as they were before, but we've moved them into the accessory structure section of our code rather than the ADU section. We also have some new general definitions that are not necessarily land use-related. Again, accessory structures, further defining those for clarification, clarifying frontages and which frontage means what. Junior ADUs, as those are a new unit type, residential multifamily developments to ensure that we do achieve maximum density on sites per state law in our housing element. Updated definitions for recreational vehicles. A lot of, we get a lot of calls about tiny homes. Tiny homes in the building code means stick-built, very small homes, but tiny homes are also used as a term to describe recreational vehicles that are built out very similar to sort of a living environment and a house, but are regulated by the DMV. And so those currently by state law are not able to be used for permanent residential structures. So we had added some additional language on that. Some addition on residential additions to make sure that people just don't do large additions that are in fact second units, that we are capturing those as independent living units. An update to vacation rentals, just to ensure that people understand what the limits and terms are of vacation rentals, and a wet bar definition, again, to ensure that everything that's intended to be used as an independent living unit is counted as such. So I think we're gonna pause here at the end of ADUs and take any questions or comments that you might have, if you have any, before we jump into urban dwelling units, just so we can perhaps keep things a little bit separate in our mind, even though there is a lot of overlap between the two.
Thank you, Kelly, and thanks for really providing them a great presentation. I apologize for being late. I don't know why my computer decided to want to crash right at the same time as Zoom went down for me, and I had to do two reboots, so, but anyway, I'm back, and we're both happy to answer your questions on the accessory dwelling portion, and we'll go from here. Hopefully, my computer continues to behave, so we'll see.
If there are no questions, we'd be happy to move on, but.
So I guess what I didn't set, we know Jeff, Dan, and Ikop, our chair is out, so Tori, are you your active chair?
I am, yes. I think Victoria has a question.
Yeah, just with the new definitions and wanting to clarify about what counts as ADU and what doesn't. I saw towards the back of the packet about cargoes, aka C-trains, metal containers. Are there definitions added for that too, for any conversions, or?
There's not. I mean, basically, the way we see it is a cargo container and anything else like that could become a construction material to build a unit, but any unit's gonna have to be built to be compliant with the California Building Code, have the insulation, have the foundation, all of those things. One thing we have really carved out of here is a recreational vehicle, and that's a vehicle that's on wheels, that is classified as an RV. Those won't qualify as ADUs because there's a whole different characteristic to that and a different process for that, and it's a vehicle, and it can be moved around, and there's a whole host of other issues with that. So that's really the only thing that's excluded, but in terms of if someone wanted to use a cargo container and use that as construction materials to build into a unit or make units out of cargo containers, there's no prohibition against that as long as they can make a structure that's gonna comply with the building code and comply with the size standards and setback standards and everything else.
And I did want to clarify that we do already have language in our current code that addresses C-trains used as architectural materials versus just a standard C-train for storage, so that concern is already taken care of, and we didn't need to change any language to accommodate that. Are there any more ADUs-specific questions?
I have a question. The main objective of this change in language is to is to reduce the amount of approval that has to go through a certain construction. So do you, in your opinion, do you see this as streamlining and doing what it's intended?
Well, that's a really, that's a big question. The reality is the main reason behind this update is we have to be in alignment with what the state did, and the state did a huge series of updates to their accessory dwelling unit standards, and their updates became so convoluted that they had to provide an ADU handbook to help us understand what those updates mean, and then a whole host of attorneys have weighed in over the past year to interpret those and present case law on those. So this compilation is a result of that. Does it streamline the process? Well, it definitely reduces the fees because no longer can we collect those impact fees, no longer can we have a lot of units that trigger improvements. We have a certain restricted review time in which we have to get these out, and the parameters of how they can be built, in other words, closer to property lines, in many cases, less standards for development. Even though this set of regulations seems a lot bigger and longer than what we used to have, it does provide sort of a predetermined set of standards that you, if you comply with them, great, it's easy. If you don't, then it's a whole different story. So that's really the matter. The other piece is we are gonna be supplying these stock plans to fit in with these new standards, so that even further streamlines the whole process. Theoretically, someone in the next three months could come in. If they have a property that meets all the standards and they can fit it on there, they can pick up a set of our stock plans, they can have a civil engineer do, you know, their siting plan if they need to, and any structural engineering for their foundation, and away they go, and there's not even any development impact fees if it's less than 750. So in a way, yeah, I would say it definitely does streamline it, but it also calls out properties that may or may not be able to fit these units because they're in an extreme fire hazard zone with only one way out, or they're on a property that's too small, that can't support it for wastewater. But that hasn't changed. That's always been that way. We've just clarified those details more rather than left it, you know, up to the person or the engineer coming in, so it just adds a lot more language to the code.
Okay, well, I'm looking to make the process easier for not only people wanting to add units because they're desperately needed, especially low-income, and not burdening you guys with 800 requests to go from scratch. So the boxed versions, the canned versions definitely would hopefully help out the staff. Okay, great, thank you.
I have a quick question. So as long as they, like you were giving that example, they come in, their property fits all the requirements, they take one of those stock plans, they have a civil engineer do it. So does that just all go through the city, or would that come to us? Under what circumstances would an ADU come to us after we pass all these code changes?
These all would go straight to a construction permit. You wouldn't see any of these unless there's a very unusual circumstance. But basically, the state requires that we approve these nondiscretionarily, no use permit, no planning commission review, no design review committee, so it'd be a straight construction permit every time. In fact, I can't think of a reason why we'd end up a planning commission unless there's other issues with the property that we needed to resolve, but as an ADU, in no cases would they come to the planning commission.
What if it was over 1,200 square feet? Would it just be, sorry, you gotta make it smaller?
Yes.
Okay.
Or go through the whole process.
Right.
Yeah, so we don't have a provision to go over 1,200 square feet at all, so there wouldn't be any option, even at the planning commission level, to call it an ADU over 1,200 square feet.
Even if it's still less than 50% of the main dwelling units?
That's right.
Okay.
I remembered one more question I had around meters and hooking up and whether or not owners when they're building had to have a separate meter, specifically water, and that would just make a very big increase on the property owner for building, so I didn't know if that was a requirement or not. I couldn't find that.
They don't have to have a separate meter, right, Kelly?
I believe, yeah, that's regulated by state law, so I believe in existing house, you can tie into the existing water meter. I do think there might be provisions in state law for cities and water purveyors to require a separate connection if it's part of new construction, so if your primary house and second unit are submitted together as new construction on a vacant property. In terms of existing houses, the state law is fairly clear that they cannot require a separate connection.
Okay, any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, Kelly, if you want to give us part two.
Okay, so we have ADUs and junior ADUs, and then the state decided we would also have UDUs, so urban dwelling units. So January 1st of this year, Senate Bill 9 took effect. So Senate Bill 9 related to urban dwelling units and urban subdivisions or urban lot splits. So what that, in general, that law said was basically any single-family property now has the ability to construct up to four dwelling units on every property. The ability to construct up to four dwelling units on every property. So two primary dwelling units, your principal house and a new urban dwelling unit. As well as your accessory dwelling unit and then potential junior accessory dwelling unit. So they really are looking for infill development and to help accommodate that. So it only applies to single-family residential properties. The urban lot split allows those properties to be subdivided roughly in half. If you subdivide, you can't have four units on each of those resulting properties. It's still four total for the original lot. So if you do do an urban lot split, then you are limited to two units on each of those properties. But I think the state was thinking it does allow people some greater financing flexibility. In order to assist with housing development. So SB 9 does not apply to the entire city. The state law recognizes that these should be allowed in what they consider urbanized areas. They do have an interesting urbanized area map that's published for the city of Atascadero. It does include some interesting areas on the west side. Up San Gregorio Road, which I'm not sure is entirely urbanized. But majority of the area is, you know, the area that we consider to be our smaller lot. Single-family neighborhoods and our more urbanized areas that have availability of services. The boundary is not parcel specific. And so if a parcel is partially within that urbanized area, then they do qualify. And anybody that has a property can call and ask us if their property is in and out, in or out. And again, it only applies to the single-family zone. So no multi-family zones are included under the provisions of SB 9. So we did a rough analysis and these are the approximate locations of parcels that would be eligible. Based on zoning designation and based on availability to sewer. So again, in this state law, cities are able to enact standards that are limiting of SB 9. As long as they are related to health and safety concerns. So in our particular jurisdiction, again, we have concerns and areas not served by sewer in terms of lot splits and additional units. Neighborhoods, again, without that secondary access route. Properties with great average slopes. So our normal general plan talks about policies for lot splits that ensure that we identify building envelopes. That are actually buildable and accessible, so that people aren't splitting properties and then selling off undevelopable portions of land. So we did include similar provisions to that in the SB 9 regulations. The state also recognizes that there might be properties with sensitive environmental areas, creeks, wetlands, things of that nature. So we do have the authority under state law to analyze properties with those features. And deny a UDU or urban lot split application. That also extends to properties and areas of known archaeological resources or properties that include and are identified. Historic properties within the city. So what does it look like for a single-family property with all of these rules put together? So again, the maximum development potential for single-family properties is now four units per property within that urbanized area. So we've included a couple of definitions for clarity. The principal residence is sort of your first residential unit on that existing property. It's your kind of main residence that's not limited to size or anything like that. You could have a detached accessory dwelling unit and a detached urban dwelling unit with a junior ADU and your principal residence. You could have a principal residence and an attached ADU. An urban dwelling unit with a junior ADU attached in it. So that's, some people term it sort of the duplex state law, SB 9 as the duplex law. Because it does allow for attached unit opportunities. Similarly, you could attach your UDU, your junior ADU to your principal and have a detached ADU. You could have all four attached to each other. So there's an infinite number of ways that you can put these together. When we talk about how we might arrange those properties if we do a lot split. Again, that lot split is roughly half and half. And so as long as two units end up on each property that is compliant with the law. Once you do do a lot split, if there was a principal unit on the lot to begin with, anything else built. On the secondary lot would include an urban dwelling unit. You couldn't have another principal unit. So all of those units would be restricted to urban dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit requirements in terms of size. And development standards. So an urban lot split, we defined in the code, it's a lot split created under the provisions of Senate Bill 9. By an owner of a single-family property. So state law was fairly clear that they did want these properties to be owner occupied. And they wanted them to be, you know, owned by a resident on the property prior to lot split. There was some concerns that these would become investment type situations. And the state really was focusing on infill housing and neighborhood compatibility. Through ensuring that it is done by existing residents and, and people that sort of are, are familiar with the area. So, and then the urban dwelling unit is a new unit created under the provisions of SB 9 in our new chapter 18 as proposed. And again, an urban dwelling unit is considered a primary dwelling unit. So can be constructed with a junior ADU or ADU and is not considered an accessory dwelling unit. So in terms of the urban lot split standards, again, single-family zones only. We do have a lot of multifamily properties out there that appear a single-family. But it is for single-family zoning districts, not how the property is developed. There is a three-year owner occupancy requirement for at least one of the units. On at least one of the properties that results from an urban lot split. The lot does have to be split roughly in half. So you can't create a super small lot. If you have a larger lot, there is a 60-40 maximum ratio requirement. And then you can't do subsequent urban lot splits. So you can't keep doing them until you get down to the state's minimum lot size, which is 1,200 square feet. So you can do an urban lot split once. If our zoning regulations were to change in the future, you could do another lot split. But it would not be a ministerial lot split like the urban lot split is. It would have to go through the normal planning review process and through planning commission. And a couple of other things to note out of some of those development standards is the original lot has to have a minimum street frontage. So we have a lot of flag lots or lots accessed by an access easement currently. And those under our proposed code language would not be eligible for an urban lot split. You can do an urban lot split that creates a flag, but the original lot does have to have frontage. As we proposed the language on an existing street. Some more development standards, again, 1,000 square foot maximum. To be consistent with accessory dwelling units, so that there's a minimal confusion between the two. They again have those four-foot setback allowances if they are no greater than 16 feet tall. Other than that, the height is subject to regular zoning unless they have that reduced setback. The state limits it to just one parking space for every UDU, so we can't require more than that. We do have an open space requirement, just to make sure that these are not packed into a lot. And that there is still some open space allowed for everybody on the site. When we talk again in, in ADUs and UDUs about attached garages, we do want to make sure that we can at least have. A one-car garage attached to these units. The OSR is supposed to be more affordable units. They're supposed to fit in with the existing neighborhood and they're not supposed to dominate a site. So we do have a limitation for a slightly larger one-car garage attached to units. If somebody did want to build a unit over a two-car garage, there are some exceptions and allowances for that. Or under based on our topography, if that's the way the site flows. We also took some language from some of our existing plan developments. And applied the development standard that would require that the second story of any UDU be 75% of the ground floor. To create some architectural interest and ensure that we don't end up with two-story boxes, which is fairly uncharacteristic of a Tascadero in general. We also included lot coverage standards to ensure that there was still some open space areas. And attention to a site development more in keeping with the Tascadero's rural nature. And then unlike accessory dwelling units where the state law prohibits us from doing frontage improvements for accessory dwelling units. State law does allow cities to require frontage improvements for urban dwelling units and for urban lot splits. As long as those developments or those frontage improvements occur with development of the lot. So we cannot require them for recordation of the map, but we can require them with a subsequent building permit for development. We've also added in some architectural design guidelines for urban dwelling units to make sure that they have some articulation. This is kind of a similar style to how a lot of cities do their objective design standards. Where they create a menu of design detailing and then allow applicants to choose from that menu. So I believe we have it set up for a minimum of five architectural features for a street-facing facade. And three architectural features for interior yard-facing facades. And then this allows variety of architectural style. You can do contemporary with this. You can do a craftsman, you can do a number of different architectural styles and you're not limited to just one. But it does ensure that we do have some level of articulation for these units. And so that concludes urban dwelling units. Maybe we'll stop here and answer and ask any questions about urban dwelling units. I think the remaining slides, though, correct me if I'm long, are just our recommendations.
They, they are. So we're, we're rehashing the ADU resolutions. And then the UDUs, which is the next slide. Also has two resolutions, a draft resolution A and B. So don't get that confusing you. It's not, it should have been 1, 2, 3, 4, but we actually designed this as two separate reports. A total of four resolutions. There's an A and B for ADA, an A and B for UDU. Enough terminology, this is going to get really confusing if we start talking about primary and principal and junior. We'll get even more down that line. So let's not go there. But anyway, we're here to answer your questions to try and clarify all of this. The effort really is to adopt state law and to bring that into a Tascadero. We're required to do it. At the same time, we have to decipher all of our health and safety standards, all of our local conditions. So that's what we've done our best to try and do. But let us know if you've got questions and then we can go to the public. Thank you.
Any questions on UDUs from the commissioners?
No, it seemed pretty clear.
Well, I do have a question. I'm wondering if my infant will let me do it. She was totally great 10 minutes ago, you know. So, yeah, anyhow, regarding the half acre per unit. I know you talked about that during the ADU thing, but I know it's revisited again around that, you know, analysis that was done. On particularly the septic systems. When was that assessment done? I think it said something about like monsoon consultants.
Yeah, so we, hi, monsoon consultants had, is a hydrogeologist. And so they looked at standards from the land. They, they, so UC Davis, I think at one point in time is where the methodology came from, came from. And they sort of did a study on, you know, what is the land density needed before you start having an over-concentration of nitrogen in the soils and then potentially into groundwater sources. And they used a number of different methodologies in the study. In addition to that sort of UC Davis that's sort of become what a lot of cities use to determine nitrogen loading. And septic system design standards. They looked at, should we include soils type? Should we include slope? Should we include, you know, a bunch of different factors? And really, a lot of those either came back as, you know, too, too complicated to be able to give people adequate direction. And that the UC Davis methodology really did hold up. So regardless of soils type or any sort of, you know, underlying conditions. Of course, our land has standards that would protect areas of high groundwater. Because you still have to have a certain perk rate and you still have to design it in a certain way. You know, to protect natural features and creeks. But the half-acre methodology really did stand up and it's very easy for the public to understand and implement. So we're at a half an acre per unit, again, not including junior accessory dwelling units. So if you were on a single-family property on septic and you wanted to have a detached accessory dwelling unit, your principal unit and a UDU. You would then need one and a half acres minimum.
Any other questions? So I guess we. I guess we open it up to public comment now, if there's any, let me find the.
Yes, we can, we can go ahead and do that now. So we've got a few attendees out in the lobby. If they'd like to come in and provide some comments.
Yes.
Please raise your hand or.
And if you're on the phone, you use star nine, right Kelly? Star nine, if you raise your hand, if you're on the phone, otherwise just raise your hand and if you have any questions.
Use the raise hand function at the bottom of the screen. We want to hear from you and we have a raised hand.
We do.
All right.
And that was a person on the phone and you're muted and to unmute yourself on the phone, it is star six.
Hello?
Please, oh, we can hear you.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi.
Hello. Hi.
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I've been trying to interpret it, what, or interpret what you guys are talking about. And I just basically just have one question. I live on Santa Cruz Road. I have 2.67 acres and it's zoned RS. What, what am I able to do with the 2.67 acres that I have right now?
I forget, are you on sewer over there or are you on septic still over there?
No, we're, we're on septic.
You're on septic.
I, I believe that Santa Cruz is outside of the urbanized area. We'd be happy to, to take a call and chat further about it. So in an area outside the urbanized area on septic with that acreage. You would be allowed to do your principal unit, a detached or attached ADU. And a junior ADU, providing that you could do a septic design that met our land standards.
Well, I, I'm more concerned about being able to split because. I have my son and grandsons that live in, we, we have two units. We have the main unit and then we have a 1,200 square foot. Unit that my son and grandsons live in. And what I'm, the only thing I'm trying to accomplish is trying to split our existing property. So that he could, you know, we could deed, deed that to, to him. So he's owner and we're not owners.
Yeah, that sounds, that makes total sense.
Outside the urbanized area is governed by our zoning regulations for lot splits. So the minimum lot size in the residential suburban zone is two and a half acres. So you'd need at least five acres to split.
So what I would suggest is you, because we do get involved in our general plan update that we're starting now. And all throughout next year, there'll be a number of opportunities to weigh in on that. I'm not sure that the zoning will change over there. I know you're right up against Home Depot and all that development. But the real thing that's going to trigger that zoning changing over there to allow smaller lot sizes. Is going to be the ability to hook up to sewer. And that's going to depend on the elevation and whatever we can gravity feed that area. Because the sewer does go all the way up El Camino and I believe Home Depot is on sewer, if I'm not mistaken, right? So.
I wanted to clarify if you're on.
Not only that, I, not only that, I was told a while back that. They're talking about tearing up the road to put in a pumping station. So when I talked to. The Public Works Assistant Director. I asked, well, you know, if they're going to go through all that cost, why don't they just go ahead and put sewer down the road? You know, at the same time, they're, they're tearing everything up. Why not just put sewer in at the same time so we can tap into it?
Yeah, I would definitely reach out and call staff because if you're on the Home Depot side of Santa Cruz, there might be some additional options for you. So feel free to give us a call and we can chat through those.
Yeah, because it was pretty confusing. I'm looking, I'm looking at the Tascadero urbanized area and potential parcel. And it's showing Santa Cruz Road and it's showing the area. At least the site of Santa Cruz Road that we live on and it's showing in a blue area. And if you scroll down, it, it says. census urbanized area. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Can we get your name for the record? Sorry, before we.
Yeah, sure. First name is Kevin. Last name's H O K I T.
Perfect. Yeah. If you're within the urbanized area, lot splits may be allowed on septic as long as they're compliant with our lamp standards. And so that does involve a calculation based on average rainfall for certain zones within the city. So I would encourage you to have a call and reach out.
So there's two homes right now on the property. Both have septic. And all I'm looking to accomplish is split so I can deed it to my son. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we'd be happy to chat with you and go through those standards to see if that's a possibility.
Okay. Well, we've been waiting for a long time. So sooner the better. I would like to try and get something going as, you know, as soon as we can, because every day is a blessing.
Great. Give, give one of our planners a call this week on that because the urban dwelling unit standards, the urban loss plus standards are already in place. So it's going to rely on your septic. So let's start that discussion now. As soon as, yeah, as soon as this later this week or next week, give one of our planners a call.
Do you have the phone number for the city, Kevin?
Yeah, I do. I tried calling it all day today and I couldn't get through to anybody. It was almost like the phones were down or something.
It was a, yeah, it was a spectrum issue throughout multiple portions of the city.
Apologize for that.
No problem. Is this Phil?
Yes, this is.
Yeah, okay. Well, we've, we've talked before. So who, who would be the best person to contact on this?
You can start with me and I can refer you to one of our planners, right? Just like that. And we can do that. And she's got my contact info, Kevin. We can go that way.
Yeah, like I said, that's all, you know, I'm not in the, I mean, it'd be great to, I, I've got a daughter and a son alive. Like to put a place for them on the, on the property too.
Yeah.
Without getting too greedy, you know, I would like to at least be able to, that way my son owns something, you know. So we have two houses right now on 2.67 acres, both on septic. The newest house is only three years old. So you know, that, I mean, I, I would like to take a look at bowling tree, but it sounds like even doing, doing a split is going to be a struggle, right?
Yeah, give us a call and we can go through the calculation and see where it ends up.
Okay, I'll get out of your hair then. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right. Yeah, I'll call Phil tomorrow. Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? We have another Greg Revat. Oh, we got them all now. They're all popping up.
Let's do Greg first if you can unmute yourself, Greg.
Okay, I, I was, I was looking at the S B nine design criteria. And it looks like it's different from some of the previous meetings. You've increased the square footage allowable to 1,000 square feet. Is that the case?
Yes. Yes, some things have changed.
Okay, you're still requiring a porches.
We now have our design standards that you can choose from. So you don't have to do a porch necessarily.
Okay. And then I wasn't real clear on the parking. You have to do one space per unit, but is that one space covered, uncovered or attached or?
Whatever you want.
Your choice.
I, I wasn't sure. So you're not requiring one car garages then?
No.
I think that's it. That's all I, that's my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
The next is Mr. Haggy.
Can you say your name for the record, Mr. Haggy? And unmute yourself.
Star six or unmute? Yeah. We still want to talk.
If you still have a question, Mr. Haggy or Ms. Haggy, you can unmute yourself and ask your question.
Star six or unmute button?
Looks like that went away. If you are having technical difficulties, this will be going to city council for a final review. So please feel free to reach out and we're happy to.
You can always email us. You can always, you can even call me. Eight oh five five three eight nine two five six. If you're having technical difficulties and you can't get on. Or you can chime in on the the texting here. So, all right, anyone else want to speak at all?
I was just going to say, you can call our lovely planning department because you're all very nice and helpful.
Thank you, Tori.
You're welcome.
Looks like we still have three attendees. Would anybody else like to speak? Not seeing any raised hands.
So I'll go ahead and close public comment. And any other?
I just saw.
Yeah, I just. I did too.
Are you still wanting to speak? You can raise your hand and we can try it again.
Okay, I'll reopen public comment if I closed it and Ms. Devin Haggy can speak.
So sorry about that. Thank you so much. I had a little technical issue.
No problem.
All right, logged on to a different apparatus here. So my quick question was just the terminology or the background or understanding of these A D Us having the restriction just for their 30 day minimum residential criteria. So what was the thought process that these could not be utilized as like Airbnb to increase revenue for the city? I didn't know if that was.
Actually, yeah, it's actually a state, it's part of the state law. So state, the state prohibits use of A D Us or urban dwelling units for short term rentals.
And we don't have any control over that. The state, their intent is to want to preserve these for housing for people for long term.
Totally understandable. I just didn't know which way it was coming.
Yeah.
Just for us, tourism in the Tascadero would be greatly appreciated, but if it was a state mandate, that's just something we can't do.
Now, there's nothing, there's nothing that says you can't live in an A D U and rent out your other house that you have on your property. You're allowed to do that.
Yeah, my wife would say otherwise, though.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Devin.
Do dog houses count as A D Us?
Only if they're 750 feet or square feet.
Well, there's a minimum, there is a minimum square footage of any, of any unit. What is that? Like 120 square feet?
No, 170 or two something.
That's a heck of a doghouse. It's like a dog palace.
The building code does have a minimum, minimum square footage, but yeah.
It went down recently, but.
Yeah, it's pretty small.
Okay, so I think we're, I don't see any more hands raised. So I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the planning commission for any other comments or questions for staff and discussion or motions.
Well, over here.
Yes.
I was like, I could press the raise hand, but I have a real. So, yeah, I guess I'm just, I've been racking my brain about, you know, the primary concern I'm having is, okay, how do we protect the creeks and the streams and our water supply that we're drinking? Whether that be well or through our municipalities and increase affordable housing options, right? That seems to be the crux of like what I've been scanning on these many, many beautifully written pages. And so I'm, I'm a little, I guess, not sure, because I don't have the assessment or the studies on that three quarter acre, three quarter acre exemption. If people have a half an acre or more and they can potentially get a city engineer, not the city engineer, they can hire an engineer because I'm, I'm guessing that our staff is going to be pretty limited on this. If they can hire someone to say they have an alternative onsite wastewater system, if they're on septic or if they have another professional that's listed in the lamp. I just don't have the resources in front of me to see that that UC Davis study was just going to work for everybody. That cumulative, your neighbor.
Yeah. So there's a couple of different pieces. So our lamp currently obviously focuses on a parcel and engineering, right? So for any amount of money, you can kind of engineer anything. And it just looks at the parcel boundaries, but we know that water flows under parcel boundaries. And so our job as the city is to look at regions or citywide impacts and make sure that we are attentive to those impacts.
Of course.
That's really where that half acre per unit comes in. When we look through what the state said for S B nine units within the urbanized area is they basically said, okay, cities, you can establish standards, but you can't prohibit somebody from building two units on a property, two primary units on a property in the urbanized area. So somebody can come and waive all of your development standards if it prohibits them from building two primary units within, on a property in the urbanized area. And so we did add an exception into the S B nine code language for those pre-treatment systems that basically release clean water. And then there's no nitrogen loading impact. And then because these are so closely related, we went back to A D Us and we said, you know what? We should allow the same thing for A D Us. So that exception is in there as well. There's a different layer of exception for a slightly smaller parcel surrounded by larger parcels that still retain that half acre per unit density because some of their neighbors have larger parcels. And those wouldn't necessarily require the pre-treatment system because there is more expense related to that. But it would allow an engineer to come in per the lamp and design a standard system if possible. And so A D Us have a couple of different layers of options because they're, they can be allowed outside of that urbanized area. So we, we do have some provisions and allowances for people to use alternative systems.
Okay. And I mean, when we split lots as a city currently, what is our process for looking at nitrate loading capacities? Is the surrounding areas in question? Do we do that now?
Yeah. So, so, so through our lamp and our zoning, we have minimum lot sizes established. So the regional board has looked at our city and a majority of areas on septic have a minimum lot size for any new lots created of at least one acre. So that's where sort of that, you know, they knew second units were coming and an acre is sort of appropriate for those kind of areas. Our newer lamp sort of went a step further with establishing criteria for lot splits. And they have a calculation that's based on rainwater averages for certain regional areas. So our whole city is kind of mapped with a, with a rainwater diagram. And then there's a chart in the lamp that determines based on average rainfall, how big the lots can be. That chart basically the most minimum that could be in a Tascadero is one acre. And sometimes we run into situations where our zoning says one acre, but the lamp says an acre and a half. And so we go with the most restrictive based on that. So the half acre is somewhat built into the lamp, but it's done so in a slightly different way. But we still end up with the same, the same minimum to a certain degree.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, you know, just for commenting amongst my fellow commissioners, I'm just looking at like who, who has more priority of getting lot splits or be able to, able to build these units versus, and you know, who gets the benefit versus who's going to incur the impact and how much resources or land you have accordingly. But you have to pay a surveyor if you're going to subdivide. So I'm just curious, you know, paying an engineer or whatnot for half an acre or more, rather than just that three quarter, because there's quite a bit of, I don't know, arbitrariness to me as far as like looking at the cumulative acreage on each side. But that's, that's my main comments for tonight on that.
And thank you for that, Victoria, because that was not something I would have thought about. So thanks.
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned with, you know, this looks good. It's streamlined. I know it's an easier process, especially for staff who wrote it, to be able to say, this is, this is where we're at. Let's look at these. This is what we're doing for everybody. Yeah, I just don't see us being able to get, you know, the gentleman earlier who made the public comment about how, well, why can't we just put in, hook up to the, to the city's sewer, you know? Very complicated. And I don't think that we're probably going to look forward to doing that really at all. I feel like that ship has sailed as far as the city being able to have everyone on, you know, sewer. So.
Not everyone, but there are areas that are within our urban services line that are destined to hook up to sewer eventually. But these rely on lift stations, they rely on extensions. It has to be more of a community wide effort. It's a big deal. In addition to the fact that our wastewater treatment plants add capacity now, which is a whole nother story. So these are the biggest constraints. These are the constraints. These are the problems that we're having to deal with. It is a little bit, it's not the tightest as it should be in this ordinance, because we want, the council wants us to have flexibility. They want us to look at these things a little more closely. You know, I think our previous ordinance simply shut it off at one acre. A one acre minimum lot size is smallest you can have an A D U on. Our council wanted us to be more flexible. That's why we have these standards. That's why we dialed this down further and said that maybe we can go less than an acre. Maybe we can look at options. If, you know, we can get an engineer to sign it off, but also looking at the regional implications of doing that when you've got certain soil types in certain areas. It's, it's a very complex matter. I'll just say that.
And I was actually going to ask about the wastewater treatment plant. We are at capacity currently. I mean, if, let's say we add a new one approved tomorrow. What's the timeline on that to get a bigger, more efficient wastewater treatment plant for the city?
I would estimate at the rate things move, it could be five years, five to seven.
Okay.
Yeah, very, very.
Five to seven. They've already started some pre-design consultations. So.
Awesome.
Object on the horizon.
And so once, so that's going to happen. It has to happen.
Oh, it's going to happen. We can't do our, we can't move forward with our community if we don't. In other words, as we do our general plan update, this will be one of the major factors to consider and we'll have to factor in that timeline. And the city is collecting fees and preparing for that that update. So.
And so are there plans to expand sewer service once that wastewater treatment plant is?
The city won't be proactively necessarily expanding sewer service. That will be up to private development to guide that and to, to, and to.
We do have a couple of areas identified in the lamp that the regional board would like us to extend sewer to and those.
Like up traffic way to Santa Cruz.
And then what is it called? River Gardens, the area by Sycamore, under the, the bridge against, against the Salinas that has really sandy soil. There are a couple of other areas that are areas of known failure or known groundwater impacts. And the regional board would like us to target those areas. Of course, it does rely on funding.
Right, of course. Okay. Greg, did you have a question or comment? I just saw your screen.
Looks like Randy's got his hand raised though.
Oh, oh, there it is. Hi, Randy.
Hello. So I believe under, it was under the urban development section where it briefly mentioned a 30% grade on a lot showing like, hey, that's a no go. I was wondering in that situation, is it specific just to the construction area? Or is it, hey, if there's a 30% grade on any part of this lot, it's a no go?
So what that means is that only refers to splitting a lot, subdividing a lot. If the average slope on that lot overall is 30% or greater, we don't want to create new lots in an area where it's going to be really challenging to build. Now, if you've already got a lot and you can meet all the other requirements, you can build. It's just in a creation of new, new, new parcels and new paths.
Okay. And, and something like that, I was wondering if there are creative solutions? Like is there the ability to bring in grade and stabilize or is it, you're stuck with what you're stuck with?
You know, I think that you can build, you can build on anything. You can build on a, on a vertical sheer cliff. You really can with today's engineering and technology. What happens though in a Tascadero, if we allow someone to develop on 30% plus slopes, which is really, really steep, by the way.
Yeah.
I mean, the maximum slope of a driveway is 20% and that is, that is really steep. So at 30%, that's a slope you can't really walk up. And so what happens is you can grade that slope, you can build retaining walls, but it ends up being very disruptive environmentally, usually ends up in. disruptive environmentally, usually ends up in the result of a very significant grading, loss of a lot of trees and very expensive from engineering and very disruptive to the surrounding properties. So, that is why from an environmental perspective, we start drawing the line at that level, even though you could engineer anything. It's how far do you want to go environmentally and in terms of impacts of the properties and bushes and trees?
Okay, because the reason I'm asking is, I mean, essentially our entire highlighted area, if you're not FL Camino, as soon as you get back about a block or two, that's when all the grades start. I mean, that's the, one of the biggest things that made us affordable here is it's expensive to develop property. So you have an abundance of it, but you have the complication of it. So a lot of people who bought in this area, they're like, yeah, I got my property, but then it's like, well, can you use it at this point? So something like that, if they were going up that rabbit, or going down that rabbit hole, it sounds like they would need like environmental impact reports and they would need the whole, whole nine yards on it.
We would do what's called a precise plan, which is where we require really a further analysis and environmental analysis of the project and the grading. And we'd have to identify where the building pad would be and, and the whole bit. So it's a lot more, it's a lot more complicated. But yeah, we're seeing more and more of those for standard development because that's all that's left. And because property values have gone up so much, people are now developing these most challenging lots. And it, it is challenging, it's really expensive. And it takes a lot, much longer time, and you end up with a product that isn't as great either, because your access getting to your property is very problematic. And the maintenance of that property is really problematic, and the firefighting for that property is really problematic. So there's a lot of ramifications of doing that. It's different than when you're in an urban area like LA and you're on a steep slope next to the freeway in an urbanized zone. It's different out here because those steeper sites are surrounded by brush and habitat and wildland. And in fighting a fire on those things, it's really, really a challenge.
The way the code is written is if you're in that situation, you can still subdivide if you can identify an accessible building location with less than fifteen percent slope. So it really is ensuring that.
That's a good point, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. I just wanted to make sure, because yeah, well, it mentioned the thirty percent grade, and I was like, okay, I can understand if it's just specific to that area because yeah, it's a steep grade, but since it's total of the lot, like if you had one area where it's like, oh, I can work here, then like the end of your lots, like, you know, like a death cliff, then, you know, that kind of throws off your total, your total percentage, that's all.
Yeah, so if your flat area was your building envelope next to the road, it could still be a possibility. But if your flat area, you have to get over the cliff to get to your flat area, and the fire department's going to say no.
Gotcha, all right, thank you so much.
It, it does, Commissioner Keen, do I have permission to jump in again?
Yeah, go ahead, Victoria.
So it does seem like, without a doubt, the people who commented and just folks that I've talked to in the community about this, that there's going to need to be some basically compressed Kelly PDFs that she just came up, these slides that she made, and some literature that's very dry cut and just like, that one that you had earlier that said, one parking space, you know? And people deserve fresh air, you know, all the little, yeah, those were really concise and easy to read. And so I would imagine the more kind of literature that's produced like that, that's simple and not lots and lots of, of paragraphs to read that you might support less phone calls for one-on-ones of what can I do with my lot, you know?
With our adoption of our interim ordinance and the state guidelines, we have, we do have some handouts and then we'll be updating those for whatever council adopts. But it does get confusing when we talk about UDUs or ADUs. We've tried to make the standards as consistent as possible where that makes sense. But there are some differences, and so.
What we're going to have, when this is done at city council and gets adopted, we are going to have two webpages, one for ADUs, one for UDUs, a really basic template of what everything looks like, a link to the application, a link to where you can get stock plans. And we're going to have matching handouts at our counter that just have these really basic outlines of what you can do and how to move forward with it. You hit it dead on, Victoria, it is really a lot here to dig through. And there's a lot of interpretation that could be made, or misinterpretation that could be made. And I got to thank the state for giving it to us that way. Because it's just, that's, that's what happened at the state level, and it made it very challenging for us to implement. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, yeah, I got to admit that that's the only thing, going back, do I hate to be, is just pushing back on this so much. I'm just curious about this half acre, and I know the city council wanted to make recommendations for exemptions for three-quarter acre lots. But I'm just curious, is there any way to consider half acre or more? As far as amendments go to this?
Yeah, the council could consider that if the commission wanted to recommend looking at smaller lot sizes.
I would like to recommend that.
Small lot sizes for properties that are not served by sewer, did I hear that?
Yes.
Is that what your intention was?
Yes.
Analysis for the overall density, so change that three-quarters to a half acre.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what, what that's going to mean is it's going to be more work for a civil engineer on their behalf to demonstrate things are going to work, so.
Understand.
There's nothing that says.
Pay for that, just like they would a surveyor or, or other professionals. So I, I'd like us to be looking at that for long-term increased affordable housing options for people who have smaller acreage and can prove that they can handle that system, so.
Okay, so you, you can, yeah, you can make that recommendation as part of your, add it to the motion and see if the rest of the commission will agree, and we can take that to council.
This process is so funny, because we, yeah, I'm looking at cameras and stuff and people are, yeah. Are we potentially done with those questions on that regard? Or I don't know, as if people have other things they want, or are they ready to just make motions?
That's up to you guys.
Kind of around here.
Yeah, does anybody else have any questions or comments or or recommendations to change any of the draft resolutions? No, so if you're ready to make a motion, Victoria, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think I need a little support for what I'm intending.
Which, which one of these four would she change for the half acre?
I think it's A, but.
So I think it would be, yeah, resolution A for the ADUs, so this first one on the screen.
Okay.
Yeah, do amend the section where it calls out.
So I think you need to read, not the whole thing, but that you recommend city council adopt draft resolution A for ADUs, and then with whatever modifications you'd like.
Right, I'm looking up the page right now, I've got a you see this right now?
Yeah, and you can just say, to, to amend the section for properties on septic to go down to a half acre from three-quarter acres. And you don't need to cite the exact section, we know what you're talking about.
Okay, well then, yeah, I was going to say, the section where it discusses wastewater service for ADUs that are not served by sewer system and are on septic to go down from three-quarter to a half, given that they can demonstrate a new or expanded onsite wastewater system can accommodate with the lamp standards. By hiring out engineers and such that are approved in the lamp.
Three more resolutions, do we want to do them each individually, or do we want to?
I think we have to, Annette, is that? Correct?
I think so, because of, you're changing for resolution A, the first one.
Doesn't mean.
Resolutions.
Okay. So I'd like to copy and paste that. I'd like to be able to, yeah, motion and amendment to not only draft resolution A that I made, but draft resolution B, and then is there anything else? Because those are the two.
Yeah, I don't think that change would relate to draft resolution B at all.
Okay, the, because the UDUs, there's.
UDUs are only in the urbanized area, and I believe that the only exception for that would be a pre-treatment system.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so do you want me to call, roll call on resolution A?
And with, on draft resolution A with Victoria's amendment, changing the three-quarter acre to half acre.
Okay, let's do that one first, then.
Their finest for ADUs.
Yes. Yes, okay. Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner He?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Keen?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes five zero, and then we can go on to ADU resolution B.
So can we make a motion to pass the rest of the, the other three unchanged? Or do we need to do each one individually, Annette?
No, you can, you can do it that way, that's fine, as long as there's changes.
Okay. So if somebody wants to make a motion?
Well, I'm just trying to understand then, the other, the other three you say, so there's the draft resolution B, and then what do we have, the, the ordinance for SB nine, and then what else?
So we have two for ADUs, so we did the A for ADUs, so, and then changed the minimum size. And then draft resolution B changes chapters five and eight, amend title nine, chapters five and eighteen. And then the other two is for the UDUs, which is creating new chapters, because we don't have anything for UDUs.
Okay, I just want to make sure that whatever I suggested for A, there's consistency with what I'm saying for the others. Not that, oh, we have a change here, but then there's.
Right, and so for UDUs, there is no minimum, because it's within the urban dwelling unit. And so like Kelly said, the only exception for UDUs is the pre-treatment on the small lot sizes, because the lots in these urban spaces are already smaller.
Yeah, you, you could, you could ask council to consider with draft resolution A for UDUs, a similar tiered exception to match the, your ADU recommendation.
I guess that's what I'm saying, is, is there's consistent language in that way and making sure that it's not further confusing with the three-quarters mentioned in the others.
Yeah, so right now, UDUs do not have any mention of a smaller than half acre per unit lot size. You could recommend that the city council consider a similar exception for UDUs. But we currently don't have any language associated with that, it's not part of staff's recommendation. Should we just adopt draft resolution B for UDUs and then move on to UDUs?
Yeah, let's do that.
Is there a motion for resolution B for UDUs?
I'll make a motion for the city council to adopt draft resolution B, recommending the city council introduce the first reading by title only, an ordinance that would amend title nine for consistency with updated chapter five and eighteen related to accessory dwelling units and urban dwelling units.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Commissioner He?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Keen?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, so is there any, there's no language in draft resolution A for UDUs about a minimum size, size for a lot?
There is language about minimum size, and there, so the ADUs had a minimum size and then an exception for smaller lots surrounded by larger lots, and then an exception for pre-treatment. UDUs don't have that middle-tier language in it, so it just has a minimum lot size or it allows pre-treatment. So the commission wanted to recommend that middle tier to allow it on small, them on smaller lots where they're surrounded by larger lots, you could add that to the motion.
I'd make a motion for that.
So the motion would be to adopt draft resolution A related to urban dwelling units, adding in an exception for smaller parcels surrounded by larger parcels with the same language as recommended for accessory dwelling units.
Okay.
Is that, is that good for you, Annette?
Yes. Okay, perfect, so we just need a second. And then a roll call in it.
Okay, sounds good. Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner He?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Keen?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
And then a motion to adopt, draft, motion to adopt draft resolution B.
All motion.
You got to read it, Jason.
I'm moving my screen. Motion to adopt draft resolution B, recommending that the city council introduce an ordinance for the first reading by title only to amend title two of the Tascadaro municipal code establishing standards for urban lot splits consistent, consistent with state law.
Just wanted to clarify that it's title eleven, we like to use our sans serif font.
I'm sorry, did I, I said title two, it's title eleven.
Clear for the record.
Yes. Okay, roll call, Annette, please.
Uh, I don't think, I heard a second.
Oh, sorry, yes, a second.
A second.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner He?
Yes.
And Vice Chairperson Keen?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Great job, mission.
Yes. Okay, so any commissioner comments and reports? Besides how big your baby's getting, Victoria?
Put her to sleep right now.
And I just wanted to say for the record, Annette, that it looks like Commissioner Schmidt is no longer attending the meeting. And so he is not, he did not come back as a panelist.
Okay, I'll make a note of that, thank you.
But he is welcome to come back if he's listening somewhere from cyberspace at this time.
Yes. Because now it's time for the director's report.
So here it is. I don't believe that we have anything scheduled for you for our next planning commission hearing. So I hope you're enjoying summer and hope it's going well for you. We will have some things coming to you soon, I think we're going to be talking about at some point this year, objective design standards, that's going to be going to city council and then back to planning commission and back to city council. And that's going to really apply to new housing projects, new by right housing projects, we're trying to adopt a set of standards really help developments kind of have a preconceived idea of what we're after for design standards for these by right projects. And these are projects that won't typically come to planning commission, they may be going to designer view committee. And so we're working with that, we're also going to be starting to talk about our general plan a lot more. We're going to have our first kind of public outreach event. And we're going to coincide that with the car weekend that's coming up on August nineteenth and twentieth. And that's going to be the El Camino Nights, and it's also going to be, there's a car show the next morning in Tascadaro Lake Park. We'll have a booth set up there, and we'll probably have a booth set up for a portion of the Dancing in the Streets event downtown. And it's not really going to be an outreach to, to really like get feedback on what you want the city future to be. It's more going to be like, here's our team, here's what we're going to be doing. Here is, you know, sort of our general agenda, here's where you can get information, here's how you can connect with us. Then our next events will be more about, hey, let's get some feedback from the city, let's really get into those details. Right now, we've just initially set up a website, we've actually created a new logo for our general plan update, it's really nice, I'll share that with you soon. And we'll be starting that, so we'll be talking about that a lot more in the coming months. Let me see if I can find that.
Yeah.
Why not? I know you guys have been spending some time on it.
I know, that's all we, that's all we do is draw, yeah, no. Let's, let me see if I can find that, see who can find it first between me and Kelly, let's see.
Phil does that, I just have to say, Randy, you had a baby.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I love all these babies. I'm done with babies. So I'll just admire y'all's babies.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Just four months. Yeah.
Congrats.
So he's, he's adorable. This, this is what happens when you quarantine for a year, just saying.
Yeah, it is.
Eli.
That's very exciting and he is adorable.
Well, that's worry. Uh, Victoria, our kids can play soon.
Yeah.
We'll swear him in in a few years.
Yeah. Planning commissioner in training right there.
All right, I'm almost there. I think I have this, I'm trying to find the latest version of this logo.
I will say while they're looking for the logo, that it has been actually quite an enjoyable process, even though it's on Zoom, to get to know you all.
Yeah.
I, I do like Zoom. It, it's, it's nice to be comfy at home and, and uh, and still be able to serve. But you know, we got to get together.
Yeah, it's actually nice to be able to see all your faces because if we were in the rotunda, we'd be all spread out on that little arch. Which none of y'all have gotten to do. I've been able to be there, but I don't think any of you guys have gotten to do a planning commission meeting there.
So what I heard was Jason said he's got the first round when we all meet is what.
That's what I heard. Absolutely. Yes.
There you go.
Brown act, we might have to have just, yeah.
We just can't talk any city business whatsoever.
Pretty much.
I was going to ask Phil if the brown butter cookie company has gotten up and going and if they're going to be at their booth. Because I feel like that would be a huge draw.
They are working on it. I think they're going to, they're going to be up and going here soon. They still have to build out their kitchen and stuff. Um, so it's, it's getting there.
The property looks good. They've done some painting and cleaned it up. It looks good.
Well, there'd be. Like the paint color is really cool.
You think there'll be a ribbon cutting?
I hope so.
Yeah, it'll all go there.
Yeah.
Pre-cookie.
Yeah.
So let's see. Oh, gosh. I can kind of show you what the logo looks like because it's attached to one of these emails, but it's not big enough that I let's see, I'm trying to find.
You're muted, Victoria, if you're talking to us.
No, I just wanted to ask Randy if it's okay. I screenshotted you because I wanted to post you on my Dula um, social media.
Okay.
Okay, awesome. Thanks.
Yeah. Little guy started you. Yeah.
The old chin bottle hold.
Yeah. The beard helps actually. I'm trying to curl the bottom so it'll act as like a handle.
There you go.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Let me see. Hold on. Let's see. I've got one here. Shoot, it's not big enough.
I can't believe you weren't ready for this, Phil.
I know. I, you know, when I give you a director's report, I got to be honest with you. I don't have any preconceived idea of what I'm going to say. I honestly just kind of say.
You don't practice in front of the mirror at lunch. You're like, okay, I gotta, gotta get this down.
No, I just, oh, here's what's going on. I just, you know, it's just there. So I'm trying to share my screen. It just won't come up. It's, it's taking its time.
It is.
It's spinning, it's spinning. My computer's been spinning the whole night. Watch it crash now in case it does. Um, gosh, why is it just spinning?
Yeah, because you're frozen too.
Kelly, were you able to find the logo? Because.
It's uh, if you stop sharing, I can share. It's going to be a little fuzzy though, because for some.
I'm trying. You can't see my screen yet, can you?
No.
But it says I'm sharing and it's just spinning and now I'm stuck. Am I, is my face frozen too?
It is in a big, oh, now you're unfrozen. You're good.
My um, my resolution on my remote desktop is great, but there's a little preview. How about that?
Yeah.
That looks nice.
So we're authentic Atascadero. It actually uh, was a huge collaboration um, sort of between our consultants. But um, Phil took over with sort of the center of the um, the circle, the half circle idea, which kind of relates to our rotunda. And then our new sort of uh, website, social media outreach person, Amanda um, took the thing and ran with it and just did an amazing uh, job. So she um, she mostly designed.
Are those all the new little ADUs down there?
Some little ADUs. Of course, we have our rotunda and we have our oak trees and our rolling hills and our bright sunshine.
It's our city, our plan.
That looks great.
Captured it. We're going to have uh, stickers. We're going to have some uh, beer coasters to hang out, to hand out with our logo and a QR code that'll take you right to the website.
So you have our addresses, so we get first dibs on those beer coasters, right?
First dibs. I think we're hanging out some as part of registration for cruise night. Um, we're hoping that some of our local uh, bars and restaurants will actually have them on their tables and make use of them as well. Um, and then of course, we're hoping to have a stack at city hall to hand out. So.
Awesome.
Um, we really are hoping that people engage with our website a lot. We're hoping to have um, some regular updates with some questionnaires um, and things like that. Um, updates with what we're working on at the moment. So um, we're hoping to get a lot of people engaged.
Will work for swag. Thanks for pulling that up.
There you go. X, absolutely.
On your water bottles. We're happy to put QR codes everywhere we possibly can. There might be one during cruise night on one of Phil's vehicles. Um, as we drive by, take your phone and check it out.
Nice.
Hand stickers to any kid on a skateboard.
That's right.
It'll be somewhere. It'll be somewhere.
The city lamp posts, but other than that, go for it.
So cool. Any other questions about developments around here for Phil? Anything you're waiting on getting built?
Lots.
I've heard the new restaurant on top of um, La Plaza is really good.
The rooftop bar is amazing. The Cielo Restaurant downstairs that is connected to, amazing. Great food, great service. I tried it out Friday. I went, I, I made a reservation. Uh, it took me a little while to get to the rooftop bar because it was um, it's uh, it's only so many people that can go up there, but it was beautiful. If you get the chance, check it out. It's really nice. I, I, I just, it was great all the way around.
I must have missed you there on Friday, Phil. I was there also.
You were. Oh, my gosh. Okay. Did you have dinner as well?
Yes, I did.
Nice. I missed you. Darn. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the stuff they have you dip your bread in is a little strange, but other than that, it's good.
Whatever. Okay. Yeah.
It's nice to see some destination places. Like I don't know that anyone else around here has a rooftop bar.
No, it's pretty cool. It's pretty neat and it's this whole ambiance up there. It's just like, it's nice.
Yeah, they did a nice job.
Oh, so is that your whole report there, Phil?
That is it. Yeah.
Okay, so um, I guess we can adjourn to the next regular meeting, which will not be August sixteenth. Will it be September?
September.
So that's September sixth.
Yeah.
Okay.
So and yeah, there we are. Have a great evening, y'all.
Thank you all. It was fun leading my first meeting.
Good job.